Is this mic working? Yes, awesome. Hi, everyone. Thanks for attending our candidate forum for the 2025 general election hosted by the League of Women Voters Moscow. The League of Women Voters of Moscow is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging informed and educated participation in government. My name is Kylie Reisman, and I'm the current president for the Moscow League. Tonight's forum features candidates from across multiple local races. From 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., we will have our candidates who are up here now for mayor and city council. Then we're going to do a quick transition, and from 8:30 to 9:00 p.m., we will have candidates for the District 2 Cemetery Board and the School Board Trustee Zone 5. Candidates also have materials in the Friendship Hall, which is up these stairs and in the room that's open up there. So if you want to chat with candidates afterward, pick up yard signs or other pamphlets, that's all located up there. Tonight's event will be moderated by Lauren Binns, professor emerita of the University of Idaho Department of Forests, Rainforest and Fire Sciences, and also current board member for the League of Women Voters. We thank the candidates, audience, and volunteers for their flexibility in combining these forums so that we can have as many candidates here as possible. Well, we are also recording the event, and a YouTube link will be available with the full recording. Questions have been gathered by email in advance of the event, and we'll also collect questions throughout the evening. Questions cannot be called from the floor, but will instead be read by our moderator. Please feel free to take an index card. If you need an index card or you have one where you've written down a question, please just hold it up, and we have volunteers from the League here to collect your questions. The League reserves the right to review and select questions for their appropriateness to the position and to avoid duplicated questions. Our format is as follows. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. We'll then move to the community and audience questions, where candidates will have up to two minutes to respond. We will conclude with closing statements of up to one minute for each candidate. Throughout the evening, when a lot of time has expired, candidates will be allowed to finish a sentence before the timer indicates that their time is up. To maximize time for candidates to respond and give their statements, we ask that everyone withhold their applause until we are at the end of the forum. Because of the number of candidates and amount of time available, we want to recognize that this is just the beginning of the conversation to introduce candidates to our community. If you have additional questions, we strongly encourage you to reach out directly to your candidates. With that, let's begin tonight's forum, and we'll start with opening statements from our mayor or of candidates.
Hello, my name is Haley Lewis, and I'm running for mayor of Moscow. And I'm running because I love Moscow. And I was gonna make a joke about how that's all I needed to say, and I was gonna sit down, but I realized that won't play well. So I have lived in Moscow all but, I'm looking at my mom, three years of my life, four years of my life. Mom's first teaching job was in Boise, and so we were in Boise when I was a wee last. But I am choosing to make my home here. It is home, it's the only home I've known, and I'm choosing to build my career here. My decision to run for mayor was not a simple one. I am running because I believe that I am a very strongly qualified candidate. I'm currently serving my first term on Moscow City Council. And in my professional experience, I have done a lot of work with the business community at large in Idaho and as well with state legislators and the executive branch in Idaho. And I think it takes both sides of understanding local governance and how state governance works to make sure that we are advocating for common sense solutions and also protecting local control, which we hear a lot of, a lot of candidates at every level of government talk about. I, oh, let's look at my notes, sorry. So my grandparents moved here in the 70s. My grandpa Craig taught at the law school. My grandma ran a knitting store with her sister downtown for a long time. My mom teaches in town, and my lineage isn't meant, I share it just because I'm guessing between my Lewis family, I probably hopefully know every single one of you in one form or another in terms of the six degrees of kind of bacon theory. But if I don't know you, I'm looking forward to meeting you, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we, is this microphone on? Yeah, we can withhold applause just so we can move along. Thank you for that. Alex?
Good evening, I'm Alex Simon, running for mayor against his charming opponent. I moved to Idaho in 1984, attended the University of Idaho. Yeah, I've seen that. And earned a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering. Left in 88 to work in aerospace in a bowling company. A year and a half later, I tried to return to the Palouse. Interviewed with Ed Schweitzer and this other fellow for a job that I failed to get. So I pivoted and went back to Puget Sound and kept the job I had. But I never lost the, you guys underestimate Idaho. I know a lot of folks will speak highly of their lifelong affiliation with it. I was smitten in four years, and so I've always dreamed of coming back. And so fast forward to the end of my, well, near the end of my career. My wife had a brother who was losing a battle with cancer, and so I had, we decided to retire early and return to Moscow to take him in under our roof in hospice. And then he breathed his last a while back, and wife and I were looking at each other saying, you know, we still have something in the tank. I wasn't ready to be retired. We had to do it, it was best for the family. But I was looking for things to do, and one of them would have been to go back to the university and contribute. But then, as of late, this opportunity popped up, and I sought the castle of friends and leadership in my life. And long story short, they said, go for it. So I am throwing in my hat, and I hope that my technical background in a high-stakes industry with a lot of pressure, a lot of people, people skills, and 30-second elevator speeches should hopefully prepare me to take on the job running.
Thank you, Alex. Now, our city council candidates, and we're gonna take them first in alphabetical order, and they're sitting in alphabetical order. So Steve Bonner, you're next.
Thank you. I've spent 35 years of my life helping people. I have witnessed far too many deaths in my career, and yet was reminded yesterday why I did the work I did. When a former client contacted me that they were appreciative and living life to the fullest. I have literally saved 48 people from dying in my lifetime, twelve of those while at Sojourns Alliance. One was my office manager who was choking, that's the Heimlich. In order to pay the debt, she had to marry me, and we've been married for 13 years now. I fielded over 30,000 calls while the executive director of Palouse Regional Christline, 200-plus, were suicide calls. I transitioned to ED at Sojourns Alliance in 2006. A few years later, I approached that marriage chain about my concerns for folks in our community, and poverty and the Palouse was created. This forum resulted in the family promise of the Palouse farming, along with CHAS Clinic coming to town. When surrender trailer court was closing, I organized a fair with the resources to support their unfortunate transition. I even made way of family promise and made our recovery center a helicopter by OMC3. I was on the State Board of Idaho for homelessness for 14 years and a Moscow Affordable Housing Trust for nine years. The most severe price I paid to help people in Moscow was in 2017 when I was assaulted as soldiers and claimed close to me paralyzed or dying. I landed on my head within an inch of that, and I received seven broken ribs. My shoulder injury resulted in 50% loss use of my shoulder after surgery. Walter Britton coined this phrase, "No brag, just pat." I would represent the human heartfelt needs of our citizens in Moscow, and it's Moscow City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker, Evan, Evan Holmes.
Hi, I'm Evan Holmes. I'm glad to see all of you here, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the 1912 Center for hosting this event. It's great to be back in this building, and it's great to be amongst all of you who, like me, are concerned about the future of Moscow. Nancy and I arrived here more than 30 years ago. We quickly got immersed. We operated three businesses here, raised our children, walked the paths, and enjoyed Moscow in every way and appreciate all the amenities that have grown here, and for that, we are truly grateful. During those decades, I've volunteered for the city in many ways. I spent nine years on the Board of Adjustment in two different terms. I worked on the Comprehensive Plan revisions a couple of different times. I think we're due for another one. Many things like that. Also, local service organizations and nonprofits like PCI, Moscow Food Co-op, where I served on the board. So I've been immersed in it. I'd like to point out that I have time to do this job, I have energy to do this job, and I have knowledge to do this job. And I would bring those all there to work for you. When I say I want to do things here, I mean I want to do them in the Moscow way, and that is through collaboration. I've seen a lot accomplished here when civic organizations and businesses and the city government, and especially volunteers, work together to work towards a common goal, and that works here. That's the Moscow way, I want to perpetuate that. My specific goals would include, of course, continuing efficient delivery of services that you expect from your city government, and also that I support communication with the University of Idaho and our other partners in running this great place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Evan. Sage?
Hi, everyone. I'm Sage McKevich, and I'm a lifelong Moscow resident for Nekrmen. And I grew up in the public school system and continued that into my undergraduate program at U of I. I graduated with my marketing degree, and since then have spent about a decade in real estate here. I've been a Realtor for the last 10 years, half of that time of which I've been running Blue Sky Real Estate as the broker and owner. And just a few years ago, my wife and I bought a house here in Moscow, got married in 2023, and excitedly, we're expecting in March, so we'll become a dad, which is awesome. And, you know, part of our decision to stay in Moscow is because frankly, it's a really special place that much, much of what Evan highlighted in his introduction resonates with me as well. And it just has a great history of supporting public institutions, great partnership with the University of Idaho. I'd love to see that all continue. There's a great need for new, speaking of schools, new K through 12 public facilities. There's a great need for improved water security here on the Palouse, and there's also a need for more accessible rural housing. I hope to be able to address those. I've served on a number of nonprofit boards through the years, PCI, Sojourns Alliance, Moscow Charter School, United Way, to name a few. And I currently serve on the Laotaw County Library Foundation Board as the president. And it's been a huge honor to serve in those capacities, and I hope to continue to serve the community that I love and have grown up in, in this new fashion on council. Thank you.
Thank you, Sage. Next speaker, John Sliikum. No, Gary, Schoolen, sorry.
I was just gonna thank the League of Women Voters, but I do thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on tonight, for all of you coming. My name's Gary Schoolen, and my wife and I have been married 43 years. We have eight children, 25 grandchildren, and we've lived here for four years. I retired in 2019, I'm 70 years old. I've had two 20-year-plus careers, two 20-year-plus careers. And the last one was for 1,000 cow dairy, and for the last seven years of that, I managed that farm with a $2 million budget. This farm was profitable and successful under my management. I went back to school and got my two-year degree in fisheries after 20 years of farming and began my career in a salmon hatchery with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. I managed the salmon throughout their lifecycle. I manage water systems and the recycling of water for the different stages of their lives. Water is a valuable resource, and I've learned to maximize its usage. I worked with the local tribes to build up depleted salmon stocks. In the Skadju River, I gave tours to many groups, educating them on the life cycle of the salmon. I engaged with tourists, answering their questions as they watched the work process. I welcomed the public and was eager to let them see how their tax dollars were being spent to sustain a valuable resource, salmon. My first career was private industry, the other state. Private is successful depending on the money generated by the business. Public sector is mostly dependent on taxpayers' money. Both need to be responsible and managed well to succeed. I would like to participate in that realm as a city councillor. Here in Moscow, being mindful of taxpayers' money and keeping our town safe and a great place to live.
Thank you, Gary. Now, John.
Hello, everyone. Hope you're having a great night so far. I'm happy to blast already. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this event, and thank you, MC, for emceeing. My name is John Sliikum. I am a husband, a father, a neighbor to many of you I see, and friend to many. And I'm a relative newcomer to Moscow. I first discovered Moscow in 2015 when I came up here for my, for my best friend's wedding. I was his, I was gonna say man of honor, but I'm gonna be afterward mixed up. I was his best man, and the woman who I met there was maid of honor, and we got married. And ever since then, I have wanted to come up here, and I did. We moved here officially in 2023 despite my wife being a native of Moscow. We had our first trial in 2023, and we're about to have our daughter in March, so hey, baby buddies. But that's not what you're here to hear about, you're here to know about me. So I want to tell you a little bit about myself more than that. I'm a sustainability consultant. I cut my teeth in my career in energy management, resource management, and building facilities. Energy management for public schools, charter schools, public universities, Fortune 500s, anything that a consultant can do to help my clients save money and reduce their carbon footprint. I'm a process efficiency consultant and a capital projects manager as well. That is all to say that I love following my nose and seeing where the numbers lead me. I think that that skill set is incredibly valuable in a rural lake city council. I spend all day reading legal documents on environmental law and how it can apply with them. So I think that's a pretty good skill set for this job. Most of all, we love the city, we want to build a life here. I rent, I would love to be able to afford a home someday and find ways to do that. So thank you all for your time, and I hope you have a great rest of the evening. Cheers.
Thank you, John. Ben Stillman, Stillman.
Stillman, yeah. I'm Ben Stillman. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters, happy to be here. I've been here for the last 20 years since my wife and I met at the University of Idaho, and we're both going to school there. We've raised our five children here, they were all born in the Gribing Medical Center. I can see I'm in my pajamas, or I call them my pajamas, they're my scrubs. I was able to come straight from work to here when my coworker was kind enough to come a little early, so. I spent 13 or so years working at Gribing Medical Center in the emergency department, loved the work there. More recently, I've been working at Home Regional Hospitals as a nurse manager. I love Moscow. It's just a great community, there are great people here, there are great activities here, there are great resources here. We just love being here. As a nurse, I think some of the most important things that you learn are how to listen and look for what you need to treat someone appropriately. You learn to work as a team, and you learn to prioritize. These are things that I have tried to master over the last 13 or so years, and they're skills that I hope to bring to city council. I want to listen to all of you and the concerns that you have and the things that you love about this community and ways that we can make it better. I want to prioritize those things, start with the things that are most appropriate to focus on now, but not forget about the things that maybe can go on the back burner but are still important. I want to work as a team with council members, with the mayor, and with everyone in the community. Again, I just think the people here are amazing, they're great, they're skilled, knowledgeable, and we just love being here. I'm looking forward to serving you.
Thank you, Ben. Next speaker, Scott Sumner.
First off, I want to thank everybody as well as coming. Thank you for so many questions. I think it's really benefited to this event as well as to the community. I grew up a lot in Lee and Whitmore, and I was so excited and very proud when my kids were able to attend there. One day, I noticed the broken basketball hoop, and so I attended my first PAT meeting. If you volunteered for anything, anytime, you realize that ended up being a three- or four-year commitment. And so most of that time was spent raising funds to replace the playground that I also raised funds as a elementary school student to replace. So that one came full circle. In 2019, I started since engineering with the goal of really focusing on the community. We've grown to three offices and 25 employees at one time, and I've got a real-world experience on everything outside of engineering, outside of infrastructure development utilities, all the things that small businesses have to deal with on a daily basis, like HR, payroll, and just dealing with the challenges of a small business. In 2021, I joined the Transportation Commission for the City of Moscow. I've been the chair for the last three years, and it's been a great experience learning some of the format and intricacies of how the city and the public really interface and work together to improve Moscow. So growing with Moscow has given me so many opportunities, and I'm so proud every day from the University of Idaho, Moscow High School, and everything that I've been able to accomplish. It's, Moscow's given me those opportunities, and why I'm running is because it's just like that basketball hoop. Things take work, it takes people willing to make the commitment, and I am ready and willing, and I think I have a lot of the skill sets that are required to do that. So thank you, and I hope you appreciate me.
Thank you, Scott. And last but not least, Gina Terusio.
I was worried when you got Sliikum wrong, I didn't know what you're gonna do with Terusio. Hi, everybody, I'm Gina Terusio, Lauren had it right. And again, like everybody else up here, thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you for the thermal challenges of the evening, too. We've done it a couple times now, I know how to layer to be comfortable at this event. In May, on May 18th in 1994, I came over the top of Ryzenauer Hill, and, and there was Moscow. And I had two dogs, a cat and two kids in my Dodge Neon, and I was relocating my family to the place I knew we wanted to make home. Yeah, I remember with the little oval headlights and the video cassette owner's manual. It was so cool. But, but it, very quickly, the kids and I took, we took roots immediately. And so since May 18th, 1994, we've been here. I didn't grow up here, but in reality, I kind of did grow up here. And I have had the pleasure of being someone who, I will throw rocks at topics, right? But you can't do that unless you're willing to step up and try to work for the solution. And so my steps towards doing that, in 2016, I was appointed to council. I talked to Mayor Lambert, and he, I think he thought I was just silly enough to do it, and I did, and I loved every minute of it. Lot of reading, lot of reading, and I understand the engineering documents, the legal documents, it's a lot. I also had a beautiful five years as the Economic Development Organization Director, PEP. You guys may remember that, that was us. That's, that's with and for business, and it was a beautiful thing. I also had five years working at the Moscow Chamber of Commerce, and oh my goodness, what a fun, what a fun passion project. I continue to believe that government is the best, closest to the people, and this is where the work gets done. And I will give all of my time and most of my energy, except that after about 9 o'clock, then I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. So Robert Reich said, "Democracy is not a spectator sport," and I think you've all really addressed that in one way or another. So let's go on with the questions, and we'll start with the mayors, and then I'm going to randomly call on our city council candidates. So we'll start with Alex, but you all have the same questions. The questions that go to the mayor candidates go also to the city council candidates. What do you believe are the most pressing issues for Moscow? And how do you find consensus among differing stakeholders? What specific actions will you take? So I know some of you have addressed this a little bit, but you can go more in depth.
Okay, so since coming to Moscow, visiting prior to moving here and after having moved here, water constantly comes up, the Aquifer, and it's been studied for decades. I remember even seeing a picture in an old, old document when they poked a hole in the ground in Pullman, and water was coming out. Somebody might be able to correct me, to the 2 to 3 million gallons, some big old thing, Mayor Betsy Snodden. So water is a key thing, and there are a lot of good ideas, there's a lot of smart people dedicated to the solution, to how we take care of the Palouse Basin Aquifer. And I have been reading up on that in preparation for these kind of questions and in preparation for being, playing my role in that solution. I don't know that we're going to achieve consensus. I'm not a fake believer in consensus, and those of you that are curious about that sentiment, Margaret Thatcher had a quote that I've not yet memorized. But what I'm really looking for is a majority vote on a great idea, not a consensus vote on a mediocre idea. So I want water to last, I want it reliable and clean, and I don't want to have to deal with it a whole lot as the mayor of this, this fine town over and over again. So respectfully, I'm not looking for consensus, I'm looking for great ideas and looking for one time, we're done. Otherwise, I am also looking at the budget, and like a lot of people, you're on the campaign trail, and you want to say, ah, it's all broke, I gotta come in here and fix it, they did that wrong. In reading the documents, the only thing I can find out is we missed an opportunity to incorporate the city plans and the city goals with the budget so we can measure how well we're doing at achieving our goals. Otherwise, I'm pleased that this city has done a great job. They've taken care of a wonderful situation out here in the Palouse, and I endeavor to pick it up where it is and carry it forward.
Thank you, Alex, and Haley.
I think there are several big issues that the role of mayor is not able to easily tackle, one being the vastly changing landscape facing cities and entities seeking insurance. Like, we are an insured entity, and that landscape's been increasingly difficult. That's not just specific to Moscow, that's a nationwide dynamic, as well as a huge part of our budget is allocated to paying for healthcare for our employees, which is the right thing to do. And we are kind of held hostage in regards to navigating some of those things. Those are big-picture things, I think it's important for us to be mindful of and help staff also pursue, enable them to pursue some solutions to just chip away at those really massive bills that are really complex with actuaries behind them. As far as the direct impact for pressing issues that the mayor and council, the city can address, Alex mentioned water. Yeah, that's one of them. We are exiting what I would call the very thorough research phase with the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, which hopefully I get 15 seconds to also make the plug that their annual water summit is next Tuesday night from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the SCL Event Center in Pullman, and we should be here this status of the Aquifer update. But we're, we're moving from this very long, arduous studying phase to the doing phase. The City of Moscow, in partnership with the Idaho Department of Water Resources, has received a grant, and we are now specing out what we believe to be the most feasible and financially responsible solution for pursuing an alternate water source, which is basically sticking a straw down the hill in the Clearwater River and running a silly straw all the way up to here. There are a lot of stakeholders that will impact. I've served on the PBAC Board this past year, and we've had a lot of conversations about making sure that we don't have any blind spots, because a huge part of this is also about educating why the silly straw may be the most, the most effective and financially responsible solution for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. By the way, city council members, city council candidates, if you want me to repeat the question, I'm totally willing to do that because it's a long time from the time that I read it to the time you're answering. Gina, you're next.
Okay, now I know what you whispered to me. Thank you. Okay, I agree completely with water, and we need to secure our water future. I agree completely with what Sage said about housing. And I have my list, but I want to, I want to talk about consensus before we quit. I want to enhance transparency and communication more. I want us to be able to communicate not like this, but like this, on issues that are important to all of us. I want to, I want to strengthen, so, I want to strengthen local partnerships more. So I think that we have good partnerships. We have everybody at the table usually when we're making decisions, but things can fall apart if you don't take them out, play with them a little bit, talk through things, make sure everybody understands, not everybody's on the same page. It can be a problem. I will say jail to you, and I'm leaving it at that. Okay, so I want to talk about consensus. We all, and I can speak for, for me and probably Miss Haley, too, we come to the table with a belief in respect and a belief in the intelligence of the others, five people, six people if you count our mayor. And, and it's, we don't- And we don't walk into the room seeking to have everybody agree with the topic, right? It's never really gonna happen that way. But we come in listening, and we come in knowing that we're making the decisions for the right reasons for the entire community. So consensus, it would seem, with the council that we've had now, it happens more often than not. Sometimes it's a four to two vote, and we walk out and we're still friends, and we still know we're doing the right thing. So I think consensus has a definition of the right solution for the right reason for our community.
Thank you, Gina. Next is Ben.
To somewhat echo Gina, I think the biggest problem I see, well, water and housing and all those things are definitely issues that I want to address. There's a severe decline in empathy and respect throughout our nation. And while I don't see it a lot here in Moscow, I do feel it currently. And we're seeing more and more of it. If we can, as a council, as a community, if we can learn to trust each other, rebuild trust if it was broken, if we can be respectful and kind and decent to one another, we can solve these other problems. And if we don't have those things, if we can't trust each other, if we're not decent to each other, if we're not willing to listen to each other, there's no way we can fix any of the other problems we have. So I think that that is our biggest issue. It is a danger to us and needs to be addressed. And especially as a city council and working with the mayor, if we can model that kind of behavior of decency and respect to one another, I think it will spread. I think that we can combat it creeping into our community if those of us in leadership positions can model that kind of behavior.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Next responder is Sage. And just to remind you all, the question was about the most pressing issues for Moscow. And now you'll find consensus to address those.
Thanks, Lauren. I addressed kind of the big three in my opening remarks. Accessible, affordable housing, water security, and schools. And I'll just touch kind of on my experience on each of those. So I've been the secretary for the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission here in Moscow for roughly the last year or so. And a big topic has been the proposal of a housing authority here in Moscow. And I like that proposal. Housing authority is just, for some background, what they can do. They can buy, sell, develop property as an independent quasi-governmental entity. So they don't require taxes. They don't cost taxpayers anything. So tax, quasi-governmentally, independently in that way. And I think something remarkable about it is that it can apply for grants that the city of Moscow and the state of Idaho cannot. So I like it from a funding perspective. I think it can subsidize affordable housing projects in Moscow. And that, to me, is really exciting. The water security issue, I mean, we've been circling around it for 30, 40-plus years with PBAC meetings and annual summits. And to me, the time is now to set some strategic goals to the effect that we get those partners all in the same room and working together. And that we set a budget for that to all happen. So it's gonna require a lot of communication, a lot of ongoing stakeholder communications for that to happen. But it's definitely pressing. I'm a huge advocate of public schools. I love the proposal of a new K-12 school facility off Palouse River Drive. I think that's super exciting. And I appreciate the work that Shanti's been putting in. And I think it's important to have a council that supports that work, too, and continues to have a good relationship with the school district. In terms of consensus, we have 11 commissions. I think it's important that the community participates in those. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sage. Next is John.
Hello again. So I don't have any new issues to bring up that haven't been brought up already. But the top three for me are housing, economic development, and keeping Moscow beautiful and growing in a sustainable way. Housing is an especially important one for me. I've been a renter ever since I moved out of my parents' house long, long, long ago. And I've seen nothing but housing prices increase and increase and increase. Now, I know that much of that has to do with national and even global factors. But in looking into the matter here at the local level, I think that there's a lot of things that we can do as a community to reduce the friction and open up the bottlenecks to bring beautiful housing here to Moscow. And that starts with looking at codes and zoning, enabling the supply of a diverse array of housing types for a diverse array of people who need houses and homes to thrive. That said, economic development and housing go hand in hand. We need more places for our businesses to grow. Over the past month and a half or of campaigning, I've talked to a numerous amount of developers, builders, and business owners. And the number one thing is we need space to grow, or else we're gonna stagnate. And the city that stagnates is not growing. The city that's not growing, well, it's doing the other thing. So let's find ways to do that, and I'm prepared to help. That said, when it comes to finding consensus, Sage and I have different ideas on how to make housing affordable. But I think that we both want the same thing, and that is to protect the people that need housing the most. And we can bring that to the marketplace of ideas on the city council by talking to people in different commissions, by talking to the citizens. And that is how consensus is formed, by weighing ideas and seeing which ones have the best long-term impacts for the good of the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Next is Evan.
Thank you. Some of the hot topics have been addressed. And I certainly agree with housing, especially as it applies to the workforce because we'll all feel the effects of lack of housing for teachers and police officers and plumbers and all that. So there's a lot of things milling around in Sage and John's head. And I agree with all of them. We're gonna throw them all at the wall and see what sticks. That's one way to get there. The water situation, I've experienced that and been to PBAC meetings for 30 years since Larry Kirkland was the director of PBAC. And we need to finalize a choice so that we can begin the long process. Well, two of them. One, finding funding and securing water rights. So I'm happy to see that PBAC is getting close to making one final recommendation. And I'm sure the city council will jump on it. For me, the big issues move beyond those obvious things. And one is changing demographics. The town that we think we know is becoming different statistically. We're becoming more affluent. We're having a bigger diversity of opinions. And some conflicts has been pointed out because of that. And we need to stay ahead of the data and the trends and make sure we're watching what the Department of Commerce tells us and the Census Bureau tells us about who we are so that we can be addressing our problems in the right way. The other thing that is different is budgeting, is money. Is we are gonna not be able to afford all the things that the county wants and the school district wants and the city wants, given the climate that I see coming from the state and federal government. We only collect about $8 million of property taxes here. And so we parlay that into a lot of things with assistance from other agencies. And we need to address ways to replace that. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. All right. Steve, you're next.
Thank you. A lot has been said about water. I agree. Without water, we have nothing. So I would propose going on, in the summer, we do a water diet where people are charged a different amount for different amount of use. I would propose that we begin doing that now and be proactive while the answers are trying to be found out. Land, when I first came here in the 70s, the edge of town was Moscow Mountain Road. I mean, yeah, Moscow Mountain View Road. Yes, that was it. Anyways, imagine 50 years ago, that's where it was. What is Moscow gonna look like in 50 years from now? We need to look at how we use the land going forward because it's not renewable. It's limited. The biggest one that I have, because I've worked with the police department for years, is the department itself. I met with Chief Dollinger last week and talked to him about what the department is. And they have a number of vacant positions that they can't build. They have two that have been frozen because of budget. Well, right now, the police department is now doing 12-hour shifts. When they have full staff, they do 3, 10-hour shifts. So there's overlap in elements per hour. With jail being closed down, now those officers that are on call in the weekend, they can't go anywhere on their days off. So the police department is a big issue for public safety. The other part of it is that I think of a simple solution. Starting wage is $60,000 for the city of Moscow. Pullman is almost $72,000 with no state tax. We need to raise the rate of beginning salaries for the police department. We are gonna get people that are going to fill those positions. And I know a graduate student, and maybe they graduated here in Moscow, got a job over there. The police department is, to me, a very critical part of our town. Thank you.
Next, Steve. Next is Scott.
I turned it off. Thank you as much. Sorry. Got a little side trip. For me, it's housing. And people think about housing, it's not where people live. It impacts their businesses. It impacts the ability to hire people. And it also impacts how much people can spend in the community. When you're spending so much money on housing, that limits the rest of the commerce and the rest of the town. And it trickles through every part of our community. Some of the things people talk about, housing authority. When people talk about housing authority, it costs money for a director. And where does that money come from? We have a lot of large businesses and community and stakeholders. And I think part of that is a private share in investing in a housing authority. And as well as, we need to look at zoning. We need to look at what we can do. We need incremental change on every element of our housing because it's a national issue. We can't just say, you know, we're gonna change it. We need to keep inching it forward. So in five, 10, and 15 years, we have progress. Because that's what the city council does. We think five, 10, 15, 20, 50 years in the future. And so we need to think about that in housing. We also need to rethink, first, you know, single-family homes. We need to think it more achievable in how that looks and be more creative in our solutions. And we need to also think about the fees and timelines. There's some things we can do, but the city, I think, does a fantastic job of keeping the things moving. I work with the staff on a regular basis, and all of them are dedicated to Moscow, and they work their butts off. As far as consensus, I welcome diversity. I think it makes us stronger in terms of ideas and our people. I think it takes a matter of respect to come consensus and willing to listen to other people. And you need to take your ego out of it. It comes down to listening to people and really finding out what is truly the best decision. And I do that on a daily basis in my company, on the Transportation Commission, and also the rest of my life. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott. And Gary, last but not least.
So I agree right off the bat with consensus. Anything, everybody in this room has a different opinion. Everybody at this table right up here has a different opinion. And if we can't sit at a table and agree on, Gina said it, it might be four to two, but we walk away friends. And we always have to do that. Now, one of the things, and it's a tough, tough thing to bring up, is taxes. I've knocked on a lot of doors. And there's been a lot of people talk about their property taxes. A lot of older people talk about their property taxes. And I'm not versed completely on the budget from A to Z. But I do feel like, I know that from 2007, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe one of you, 3% has been pushed is our max from 2007 every year. Maybe could drop it to 2007, or 2006, or something like that. Give some of these older people a break. And I know there's things in place that can give fixed income people a break. And the other thing, water's been touched on a lot. And I'm the last one, and water's a big thing with me. I spent 23 years as a salmon hatchery. Water's life. You gotta have water. We raise 2 million fish a year. And what water you have is what you had. You had to reuse that water at times, recycle it through other ponds to raise other fish. There's things that we can be doing while, before we put a pipeline to the Clearwater or have that idea that... We have fruit trees in our yard. We ask the lady at Field of the Rich, how much do each of these trees get? Five gallons every four or five days. Take a hose with a nozzle and a five-gallon bucket and give that tree five gallons. Maybe that part of your lawn go dead. Maybe you're all, all your home, whatever. This aquifer underneath us is a very interesting thing to study. And a lot of us have touched on that. But it's all we got. Let's treat it that that's all we got and conserve.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, time to move on. So we're back to our mayor candidates. So Haley, you'll be first on this next question. This one has to do with transportation. Third Street has been envisioned as a shared route for cyclists and cars with pedestrians protected on a parallel sidewalk. As development expands, how can true multimodality be expedited along the corridor and other routes frequented by vulnerable users of Moscow's transportation system? This is a question. In other words, in other words, I rephrase it. How do you plan to encourage, promote, and regulate alternatives to automobiles, including bicycles, tricycles, scooters, all the mobility devices for disabled people?
Are unicycles on that list, too? Cool. I'm not one of them, but our neighbors are avid unicyclers. So I love this question. I have become very passionate about transportation. While serving on city council, there are several boards that we typically take turns for like a one-year board assignment. And I've asked for all four years on council, I've wanted to keep the Smart Transit board liaison position. And I am really, really passionate about this. I think Moscow does a great job. We have a transportation plan. We have wayfinding committees. We've had our subcommittees who have done things like wayfinding. We're really lucky to have the Lata Chipman Trail. As far as further enhancing that, I think we need to be mindful that Idaho is one of two states in the country that does not allocate additional state funding for public transportation. What Smart Transit is a separate entity, of which the city does support local match funding. What Smart Transit operates on is a pass-through grant from ITD that's from the Federal Transportation Administration. And it's not cheap to run and maintain buses. And I think it's really important that we make sure what we already have is working and serving the people in the community currently. Our ridership numbers at Smart Transit have not recovered since post-COVID. I'm sorry, pre-COVID. And I think some of that is as far as like educating and making sure people understand we have a free fixed bus route. And also making sure we're doing everything we can as board members of this separate agency to make sure buses run on time and that it's staff adequately. I think we've done a lot of work in my last 20 seconds in existing plans to plan for existing, making sure that we've got things like planning for bike lanes, wide enough sidewalks on main thoroughfares. We are some of all of these parts. But the one I'm most passionate about is making sure that Smart Transit is healthy, stays healthy, and we make what we already have work for us.
Thank you. Alex, you're next.
Yeah, I was just, I've been thinking about this. I just recently purchased a fat tire e-bike. So I have been riding the streets of Moscow, dodging corridors, dodging, children, crossing without looking, you name it. And when you mentioned Third Street up in front of the high school, I love there's a wide lane for the bike. There's a marginal lane. I don't know what it does, but I breathe it easier because it's there and I can swerve into it if I have to. And it's just a nice example of how accommodating a bicycle mode of transportation can be made to feel. So when we're talking new development, new roads, whatnot, I would like to see the bike dimension incorporated into the design of these roads, meaning how wide we make them and so forth. As well, the trails out of town. I go out to Troy on the e-bike. I dare do it with a pedal bike. I just haven't got the horsepower anymore. But the battery's happy to do it for me. And so I'd love to see that expand, maybe head north, circle the city, you name it. Moving on to the buses, I rewound the tape back to when I was in my 30s, living in Western Washington. And Skagit County had a free bus service for a while. And it got expensive to operate. The buses were breaking down. And so I've got a little bit of a burr in my shorts over the idea of free buses all around town. And the question that was put to me through the ASUI is, what are you gonna do to ensure people have a way to get around? And I'm like, I don't think that's government's job to see to it that you can get around. But we certainly could. But we certainly could consolidate in some small way enough money to keep our buses running. So indefinitely, if the bus is the answer, we can provide buses. But I don't think free buses is the answer. We got to offset the expense of doing it and not put that burden on the whole community.
All right. Thank you. John?
You want me to sit down or stand up? I feel like I should stand up since everybody's standing up. All right. So the transportation question. Most of the year, I'm a motorcyclist. But there's a very significant part of the year, starting right about now, when I'm not because it gets cold outside. When the frost starts accumulating on your windows and you start leaving for work 15 minutes earlier to scrape them off. That's about the time when we start thinking about cars and buses. I think it's important to keep our roads very, very, very nice for a smooth ride. And it's important to do what we're doing now in building bike lanes. Bikes are essential ways to get through our very walkable city. I agree with Al when it comes to bus services. Buses are expensive. In every city that I've lived in that has had a bus service, that I've attended the meetings on, they've always been wondering, how can we pay for this? This is so expensive. How do we increase ridership? So I think that we can find sensible solutions for the city to make sure that the people that just can't get around can get around. Maybe smaller buses, maybe some other alternative solutions. There's any number of ways that we could go around this. To address Third Street in particular and roads like Third Street, I have a two-year-old child who is just starting to walk around and finding the road. So I think it's very important that in our neighborhoods and busy areas, we make sure that cars do the speed limit and that we enforce that through any number of effective means that you see all throughout the towns already. The old speed limit you're on Third is a great way to keep people from going slow. Don't hit it too fast on the bike there, you might catch some air. So let's see. Encourage, promote, regulate non-car transportation. I think I hit those pretty well. But again, in the winter, it gets cold. You're going to want a vehicle to get around it, whether it's your own or one that you lease or one that you ride on by paying the bus pass.
Thank you, John. All right, Evan?
Hello. The question was about transportation, especially as it applies to vulnerable users or alternatives to automobiles. We have to, for alternative transportation purposes, make sure that Third Street, Eighth Street, and maybe First Street stay eastbound because that's the only ones you can really bicycle well on. So I see a future, and I'm not a traffic engineer, where a couple of those roads and First Street become one-way. And that would allow us to expand bike paths and perhaps make even dedicated bike paths that are totally separated from traffic. So that is, I think, might be coming, but it takes a lot more discussion than just me throwing it out here tonight. A couple of other things that come to mind that are related with vulnerable users is more four-way stops in town. I apologize for them, but there's places we need them, we don't have them. There are also places we need more pedestrian crosswalks, like Polk Street down there by PCEI, where residential areas are accessing the park and PCEI, and there's no pedestrian crosswalks. And unfortunately, we're told we have to do studies that cost money and count traffic and all this. And some of it's just common sense. We know what we need to do. So that's the beginning of looking at vulnerable users. Public transportation is something I've seen ebb and flow here and seen money come and go for it the whole time I've been here. I still wish we had a Weefund Express, for instance. And somebody that can help us connect our towns and connect to the airports. But that is going to be a community discussion. And I'd love to be involved with it because there's people at the universities that are in industry that are experts at that sort of thing and certainly can help us with ideas to resolve that.
Thank you, Evan. Gina, you're next. Pass that mic.
Thank you. I'm getting my steps in. Okay, so the question was, how would we encourage alternative transportation? Lots of words, but the, okay. So first and foremost, I am very proud, throwdown with Ms. Haley there. I am very proud of our free local public transit system. And those buses work hard. And I am, I'm hoping someday we can expand it to the south route, then we'll have a north route. Maybe we'll go a little further into the county. I want to do all of that. I will tell you, the city has one of the best grant writers on the planet. And that is how a lot of the things that we do with transportation gets funded. Okay? We have our multimodal plan. We do safe routes to school. We do Bike to School Day, Walk to Work Day, all of those cool things. And I believe very strongly, one of you guys said education, and I completely agree with that in that the more that we can educate the community on what alternative transportation is available to them and lead by example, it'll be clearer and more popular in my mind. I do not have motorcycle helmet hair, and I don't think I can ride a bike to work. Sorry. But I aspire to that, and maybe I'll get a hairdo like some of you guys up here. I'll be just fine. But I will say, that was said with affection. What I will say is that at the very basis of it all, the very basis of it all is street maintenance and keeping our streets to where cars, walkers, bicyclists, unicycles, the little scooter things that look dangerous, all of those can safely, safely travel on them.
Thank you, Gina. Ben?
I don't ride a bike because of the hairdo. One of the things I love about Moscow is how pedestrian-friendly it really is. I mean, you can walk everywhere in town. You can get to almost anything you need to get to by walking or riding a bike. I think it's wonderful. I do hate when I'm driving on campus and someone steps out without looking. I think all of us have experienced that, like your heart skips a beat because you almost hit somebody. One of the things I've really loved the last few years is the crosswalks by the middle school that have the flashing lights. It makes it so much easier to tell when someone's stepping out. I would love to see more of those in town. I really, really like the addition on White Avenue with the wider sidewalk. Where you got the two-way sidewalk, it almost looks like a separate street, right? You see people riding their bikes, walking, the scooters around town, which I both love and hate. As a nurse, I hate the scooters. They can just be dangerous. As a proponent of alternative methods of transportation in town, I think they're great. They're convenient. You see everybody riding around on them. I wish there were more helmets. But that's an education thing as well, right? Which I think in part, this town does really, a really good job of that. We have the Officer New Bill Safety Fair, which my kids have enjoyed since they were tiny. And we got new helmets every year from that. And my kids love wearing their new helmet for like a week, and then they get old and then they stop wearing it. But I think we just need more things like that. We need the Officer New Bill Safety Fair to maybe be bigger. Who wouldn't love that? Love that thing. More helmets. I also, and I mentioned this at the last forum that we were at just last night with the young Democrats that, and I wish I could remember what it's called, but that underground tunnel that goes across Troy Avenue, the bypass, is just one. Crossing that road before that was just hazardous. But now you can do it without having multiple ways, you just go under the street. I think it's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Gary, you're next.
So I'm a papa in town with 20 grandkids. And I see the safety, like Ben was talking about. Of course, you always tell him to wear helmets. And a number of these grandkids, as they get into their 10, 11, 12-year-old age, have these little scooters that he's talking about. And the safety around town, I agree with Gina. I think we have a lot of good bike paths along the roads. I think the bump on Third is cars slow down. Cars have to keep their speed limits, and we got to enforce that. And smooth roads, the roads have to be so that bikes can travel without bumping around. But one of the things that I really, really appreciate is when you can walk up to a busy street like Mountain View has one, and I'm not sure if there's two or three others in town at least, and press a button and have lights go on. And you're able to walk across that street knowing that every car coming is going to see you cross that street. And that's something, it's, again, education, safety, and smooth roads. And there's going to be more of those scooters coming. This is a big fad. These kids are, these kids are coming around, and they don't like driving on the sidewalks. So they're going to be in the road. And we got to all be aware of that and educate everybody to that aspect. But I do love the town as far as the access to bike paths and areas that they can do that with. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Scott, you're next.
Thank you. The role of the city with multimodal transportation is something I deal with on the Transportation Commission. We hear a lot of from the public. And the one thing we really need to focus on is safety. Because if people don't feel safe riding a bike in the street or on the sidewalks or walking on the sidewalks because bikes are getting pushed because they don't feel safe in the road, that makes it challenging for everybody. And that limits the ideas and possibilities that we can do as a city. I think one of the things is education. We need to make sure we are promoting our walkable streets. We put out a map that has all of the bike streets, whether they're shared roads or whether they're bike next to the road or on sidewalks. So we have maps for those that the Transportation Commission puts together. So there is some education element. And one of the things we've talked about is signs around town that says, hey, it's 15 minutes downtown is a walk or a five-minute bike ride. So people start to get that in their head, thinking, oh geez, I didn't think about that. It's only a five-minute walk to downtown. And you need to start thinking about those things and really promoting our walkable, our city that we have. And that's kind of the education component. The other thing on education, those flashing walkways are called rapid flashing beacons. Rapid flashing beacons. So when you push the button, they rapidly flash. So I know we're very creative in the transportation field. And then the last part, as well as on promoting, Moscow is a walkable town. And a lot of people can use it, but not everyone. And the one part I will disagree about the buses is we are a community. In the community, we take care of each other. And I think the bus is one of those elements. People that use the bus need the bus. The people that, you know, we have hills. Not every sidewalk, not every route is walkable in Moscow, and we need to improve that. So we need to think of that as a community, and I think the bus is an extension of our community, helping take care of the people that need it the most. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Steve, you're next.
I don't know a lot about transportation. I would suspect from my side, I would want to look at what transportation committees have been doing with extended, with the pound, with the recommending. I'm just amazed watching a skateboard go up 63. I mean, transportation has changed drastically in the last 10, 20 years. But actually, a real practical idea, something I learned in my 35 years of social services. When people get something for free, they don't appreciate it as much as when they have to pay for it. Because there's value to that. Because with that comes, it's degrading when somebody's getting something for free, whether consciously thought of or not. And I'll give you an example. I ran an anger management group with parents. And I was on a grant, so I was making decent money, but I charged a buck a group. And I'd have some people after about 10 sessions come with 20 bucks and thank me because they appreciated it, had to work hard for it. So my perspective with the bus system, every 30 minutes is a long time to wait. That's a lot of lost time in people's lives. If we were to shorten it up, add another bus, expand to the south, and charge a buck a ride, or whatever it is, discounts for seniors, there would be value to that. It could help cover costs, but then it also speeds up time. Where I'm not, I miss the bus by 10, 5 minutes, I have to wait 25 more minutes. That's a lot of lost time in people's lives. And so that's just the only thing off the top of my head about transportation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Steve, you're last but not least.
Thanks. There's been some great responses to this question. And admittedly, I'm not an expert on multimodal transportation transit. But there are a couple of things I just want to highlight that the city of Moscow has been doing over time to make it a very, you know, relatively accessible place for multimodal transport. It's an incredible city to bike around in. I'm not a biker myself. You're not going to find me biking around town. I'm more of a dog walker kind of guy. But I love the greenway system that the city of Moscow has, encouraging bike usage on residential streets or uptown. I really appreciate our pathway system that extends out to Troy and even to Pullman and north to Kolfax. And the underpass system underneath Highway 8 is an incredible marvel of engineering. I really appreciate just all the time and energy the city has put into this topic in the past. And I would hope to see that continue and even extend into housing development and how that's prioritized. I want to see, you know, accessibility at the heart of that and the ability for folks to be able to bike to and from work and, you know, get their wheelchairs past the curb and be able to, you know, walk and drive through these higher-density developments. So yeah, that's all I really have to say on this topic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we've addressed, you've addressed some very specific issues. The last question came in this evening, and it's more of an integrative question. And we're going to start with our mayor candidates. And this is, how would you balance growth, planning, and impact on the environment, including the solutions for our water supply? So some of you have addressed this partially. But Alex, let's start with you on that. How would you balance growth, planning, impact on the environment, and with specific reference to the water supply, which you've already talked about, but you can talk about other things as well? Does that make sense? Or an integrative question?
What makes that question easier to answer is there is a lot of environmental policy already out and about that the state imposes on us. I think that the Fed's imposed on us. So some of the questions are already answered, and we're not going to have a whole lot to say about it. And I think we're better off for it. So as far as growth goes, if we're talking about areas of city impact, where now we're going to go out annex raw land, then all this stuff comes into play. Is there water out there? Stormwater runoff? How do we manage the water that rolls off of houses and gets back into the ground? Where is it going to go? So there's a lot of comprehensive thinking that has to go on around that. I'm not so sure that the mayor does a lot of that. But I think if there's any phone calls that need to be made or clarification or log jams that have to be cleared, figuratively speaking, I would be staying close to the nitty-gritty so that I could talk sensibly to whoever it is we have to convince of what problem we're solving and how we see to solve it. On this water thing, this is fascinating because I've been reading the police face and the aquifer committee stuff and the talk of the aquifer recharge. And in the various forums that we've been in, I've heard folks that say the aquifer recharge is a no-can-do. And then I've heard other people speak glowingly of it. And as an engineer, I kind of like the sound of it. So, but I'm not sold on it because I'm not in the office yet. I don't have all the access to information. I believe I will have when I am mayor. And so I see that there are many options, I guess, to sum it up. And we're going to wade through them and assess what success looks like and which approach is going to deliver us to that point. And then do all the government stuff that brings us to completion. And then we're free to grow with the water under wraps and so forth.
All right. Thank you. Haley?
I think we have come to understand that we cannot conserve our way out of our declining aquifer. We have done a lot of education. There's a lot of existing successful programs, including some of the city administer as far as low-flow toilet replacement rebates. And I was at the ribbon cutting for the HERC when the HERC opened. And I remember they gave out like the shower timers, and I still have the shower timer. Now like a low-flow, you know, showerhead. So there's a lot of education piece. I think Moscow's a really cool city to learn in and learn from. So just an aside that we can't conserve our way out of it. As far as balancing growth, planning, and the impact on the environment, Moscow's grown 1% year-over-year for the past 25 years. When I go to Association of IHOS cities conferences with my peers, and we get grouped into either small cities or large cities, Moscow's really kind of in limbo. And when I ask in both of those rooms, is anyone facing 1%? And when I ask in both of those rooms, is anyone facing 1% or less annual growth? No one raises their hand. We're seeing, we are in a really unique spot, which has made planning incredibly intentional. And we have fewer surprises than some of our peers to the north in Kootenay County or in Ada or Canyon County. But with that, I think with a comprehensive plan update coming due, we do now have 10, 20 years more data about the actual state of the aquifer. And we've done a lot of intentional planning already, assuming there's no significant change in our growth trajectory, which you never know. I think we're in a good place to stay the course and also continue to refine what our existing plans and our existing efforts to educate and preserve our resources, including trees, including public spaces, including water, to make sure that we're growing with intention and preserving the character of Moscow.
All right. Thank you, Haley. Okay, Steve, you're next. I'm gonna throw another wrinkle in here on balancing growth, planning, and land use. We haven't addressed land use quite as much, so if you want to address that. Land use.
Thank you. So I've observed what's been going on in town, like the 24-hour fitness. You have a business on the ground floor, you have apartments up top. It creates more tax base. It utilizes that space much more efficiently. Same thing with that pizza place on Second Street where they're building those other three stories. Great use of the land. More taxes are coming up, and we're not having to access land that's out there. I don't understand it, I would need to explore it. But right now, the cottage homes, like the mother-in-law homes, currently, as I understand it, the owner must live in their house in order to build one. And they can't move out. I don't understand what that is. My, I would question, why can't they? Because then they lose their HOO, their income exemption. More taxes come in, and then you have another housing unit available. As far as going further south, we have to look at more sewage. The sewage has to be pumped up over the hill to the current one. If we expand that way, or we'd have to build another one. And I think the planners, I've been looking at all of this going forward, to maximize the use, perhaps limit the sales of land to 12,000 square feet. That would be like a duplex that would fit. I mean, we have to look and explore maximum use because it's not a renewable resource for us as a community. And that goes back to what I said. 50 years ago, Mount New Road was the edge of town. What's Moscow going to look like in 50 years from now? Regardless of water, we'll solve that the same. But how do we maximize this most efficiently that we can grow and be healthy as a town? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Scott?
Thank you. In terms of growth, we do need to grow. That doesn't involve just taking up far fields upon far fields and just keep sprawling out. I've lived in towns that kept sprawling out, and you lose that community built to them. So our growth that we look at as a city, we really need to be strategic in the things that still matter to us. And growth also needs to, we've talked about redevelopment. We need to look at internally what we can do within our city limits to really get creative with the zoning code to provide more housing and to provide some more exceptions so that you can build more diverse communities within the city without just keep plowing our far fields and extending our resources as a city. There's times for that when we do need to expand our city limits. But we do need to be strategic and have a long-term plan. There's a lot of development that goes on, and the city is responsible for that as it gets annexed. So they get more resources that get tied up. So we really need to think internally first. The city's goals, I mean, we have a strategic plan, we have comp plans, and we need to think long-term. But we also need to have the flexibility to meet the needs that we have currently. As far as the environmental impacts, as an engineer, I deal with this on a regular basis. I worked with Ty Thompson on some of the stormwater regulations and gave him my input and things that I can see that they are implementing that changed it. It made it harder for me as an engineer and made it harder for the domain, actually cost more. But those are the things that needed to be done to really get us in line with a lot of the rest of the country and to really protect our streams and water bodies with a lot of pollution and stormwater. As far as the aquifer, I am not a big fan of directly recharging our aquifer because if we screw that up, that could ruin the water for everybody. We do need to, pumping it from the clear water does have its advantages. But actually pumping it into our aquifer, I think is something that I would not support. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan? The green lights still on.
All right. Thank you. The green light says go. Growth, planning, land use, and environment. I love those topics. I want to work on them. And I'm not going to solve anything here in my less than two minutes. But I want to point out that something that's always in the back of my head, we say that ULI drives the economy here. Well, over the last 100 years, it's ULI and agriculture out in the county. And so we can't overlook the importance of that industry to all of us. So as Scott says, the development of agricultural land to meet residential purposes, we have to be cautious about. We also need for our tax base to develop commercial and industrial land because right now residential property is paying 70% of our property taxes. So it'd be nice to balance that. If I'm going to talk about growth more and talk about housing, then we need different zoning types, as has been alluded to, and planned unit developments, things like that. Infilling is okay, but the top of my head always comes in with that is my desire to protect your neighborhoods and preserve the ambiance that you have and the connectedness and the way you feel about it. I don't want to sacrifice that for infilling. Moving on to water and how it fits in there, a big concern for me in water is preserving our shade trees. So if we're gonna conserve water, I don't want to make, I want to make sure we don't conserve to the extent that we kill off our shade trees that have helped create what we feel is the Moscow we know. I also want to say that our water use and study has to get more information about wells in the county. We know very little bit, very little about the wells and how much they draw and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Love the topic.
Thank you, Evan. Sage, you're next.
So on the topic of growth and planning and impact on the environment, land usage, the first thing that comes to my mind is when we create developments within the city of Moscow, when we look at opportunities for infill, the perhaps most important thing long-term is water conservation, right? We're undeniably facing climate change. And we need to think about, you know, how as a community of 25,000 people, we're going to continue to support the stable growth that Haley has discussed. And I approach development from kind of a cautious but optimistic perspective. I like the idea of high-density residences and mixed-use property. I also like the idea of being land-conscious and water-conscious. We live in a terrain that is clay-rich and presents challenges when it comes to water access and agriculture too. So I'm aware of all this. I think part of my awareness has yielded my endorsement by the Conservation Builders for Idaho. And as the comprehensive plan is coming up in 2029, that's on a 20-year schedule, I think that that kind of mindset is the type of cautious, strategic mindset that we need on city council. So Steve mentioned earlier a topic on ADUs, accessory drawing units. I just wanted to touch on that. So those cannot be used for rental only. One of those, either the home or the ADU, has to be occupied by a resident. And I like ADUs, their way to infill existing residential properties and opportunities. And I like that the city of Moscow has adopted those in a more friendly fashion. So thank you.
Thank you, Sage. All right. Gina, you're next.
Thank you. I promise that I don't always agree with Haley all the time, but it sounds like it tonight. It sounds like I'm like, yeah, but she says. We have been growing at a steady 1% for a very, very, very long time. I think that's a good thing. I believe that a growing community is a thriving community. I don't want us to grow 10% in one year because that's all kinds of crazy. And there's a lot of impacts of that kind of growth that we aren't ready to deal with. We do very, very careful planning in our community, in the city. Our comprehensive plan update, you guys have no idea the detail. And I invite you, in fact, into the conversations with us when we do this. The minutia becomes the importance of where we're going. Now, we are pulling it apart and looking at it and deciding what's going to happen in our community for the next 10 or 20 years. If we get down into the nitty-gritty, I think I might be the only cheerleader right now of infill development, it sounds like anyway, with this group. I haven't really, really think a lot of it, to be honest with you. And I love the idea of mixed-use, mixed demographics, like seniors building next to little kids and kind of mixing things up. I think that's very healthy. At the basis of all of our planning and all of our growth is the support of our existing businesses in Moscow. John, when you said economic development, I almost got up and yelled and danced around. We cannot afford to ignore the existing businesses that we have in our community. We need to support them and allow them the ability to grow themselves, to bring us that diverse economy and the diverse way of life that we have come to know. If we ignore our businesses and they die, so does Moscow. Amen.
John, you're next.
Gina, I want to give you a kudos because I'm going to reference some of your work. So in 2019, the Palouse Regional Housing Assessment that Gina signed on published an interesting figure. In 2019, there's a shortfall of 370 units in the region. And we needed to build 270 units per year from 2017 through 2027. Last year, we issued 56 new housing residential permits, which was just as many as we issued in 2020. What else was going on in 2020? COVID. So we're not building enough. And we're not building fast enough. And we all feel it, especially people that want to build a life and start a family here in Moscow. People that want to have their children be able to stay in Moscow. They feel it. We need to be able to address that. And it's the job of city council to navigate between the Scylla and Curitvis of explosive growth and economic decline. We don't want to have a suburbia suburbville where you have to navigate 30 minutes out of the neighborhood to get to the main street, to get to work 45 minutes away. I grew up in a place like that, and it stinks. We want to have a Moscow where you can walk to work, where you can have small, single-family homes and mid-level-rise apartments and pocket parks and old growth trees that keep the temperatures nice and cool and beautiful in the fall. And we can do that. To look to the future of Moscow, we can look to the past. What were we doing 100 years ago to build these beautiful neighborhoods? What can we do with our zoning and codes to make it so that we can have small, beautiful, aesthetically pleasing starter homes that fit the charm and character of this gem we call Home on the Palouse? What can we do? And I think that city council can do a lot to make sure that us, our children, and our children's children have an ability to live here. That said, when it comes to land use and environmental impact, I'm not going to add on to that because I'm out of time. But if I want to talk more, check out my website.
Thanks, John. Gary, you're next.
So the hard part about going almost last is that everybody takes all your points. When you come with land use and growth, planning comes right behind it. And it has to be, things have to be planned out very, very well. Common sense comes into play. And it's, I agree that our city limits, I agree we need growth. And we're going to have growth. It's 1% as they say a year, and we're going to have that growth no matter if we like it or not. It'd be nice to stay in these city limits and not move out into the farmland. Farmland is precious. You take that away, and it's gone forever. That being said, yeah, maybe we could grow up, you know, and things like that. But all this growth, everything comes down to, again, that last statement about water. And there's things, granted, we have to have something in place in the near future to supplement the water in the aquifer. That has been talked about for 20, 30 years. It has to be implemented. And there's things we can do now to help that aquifer not be depleted. I know Haley talked about a few things, you know, like the low-flow showerheads. There's things you can do when, you know, you got your water heater in the garage and your shower's on the other end of the house, and you stand there with your hand under the hot water or the cold water until it gets hot, and you got three or four gallons of water going down the drain. There's something, you can put a pump on each end, a hot water, that you got instant hot water. Little things like that that we need to think about and do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And last but not least, Ben.
All right. I would love to talk about rezoning because my wife loves those little pigs and little goats. And we can't have them where we currently live. So if we could do some rezoning, that'd be fantastic. Score us some points. Seriously, I am a little hesitant to speak a lot on something I know very little about. So as far as development in the community, there's not a whole lot I can say. We are growing. I think we need to grow. It's inevitable, and it's good for a community to continue to grow year to year. I think we do need to support our local businesses. I would imagine most of us have a favorite business in town. I love Amper Sand. I could go there every day and spend all day in there. And if I had unlimited funds, I'd buy the whole thing. One of the things I have been looking more into since I decided to run for city council is our water issue, the aquifer. And I've found out that I know very little about that as well. But I do understand that it's something that has been talked about for decades and decades. The Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, it's been around since 92, isn't it, right? And those are the people that I want to talk to and look to for solutions. I'm not an expert in that. I think we all here have expertise in some area, you know, but not every area. And that's why we have a committee that is full of experts that have been working on this for decades, as well as committees that work on growth and look at the statistics involved in that and what's going to help and what's going to hurt. As a city council member, I'm not going to know everything. We're not going to know everything. But thankfully, there are a ton of people in this community that are experts in those areas that we can turn to for solutions.
All right. Thank you. I realize that it's getting late, but we promised our candidates that they would each have one minute to make a summary statement. So please bear with us so that they can make their summary statements. So Haley, and they have one minute to do this.
Thank you to the lead. Thank you to the timekeepers. Thank you to Lauren. Thank you for all attending and being engaged citizens. It means the world to me. I want to take this minute to clarify two things from earlier answers. So the first question, I answered very literally in the sense of pressing issues facing the city. That's where the insurance and health insurance conversation comes from. There is a bigger conversation as far as facing the broader Moscow community, which is we have to work with every single taxing existing and potential upcoming taxing entity to coordinate, to make sure we are not all racing each other to the finish line to get a bond on the ballot. 60% of people in Latah County live within Moscow city limits, and that changed. And we need to be very mindful that we are all, all of these entities are pulling from a very limited pool of resources. And as far as land use, my last clarification. Senate Bill 1403 in 2024 was passed. Lou had asked me about this. It changes how the area of city impact is decided. That's going to impact our comprehensive plan. It is now to the counties, not the cities, to dictate that. The landscape is always changing.
Thank you. We're not allowed to interrupt the last sentence. Alex, go ahead.
And in closing, I've wanted to answer questions I always hopefully ask, and they never are. So I'm going to ask them of myself and give you the answers. What responsibilities of this office do you personally consider the most important? And this gets to the character of the job. The decisions made in City Hall affect people's homes, livelihoods, families. of the job? The decisions made in City Hall affect people's homes, livelihoods, families, and futures. Decisions should be made sincerely, in earnest, with all the seriousness they deserve. The other question, what, this one I really like, what are three main goals you have for your time in office? To have been seen as a mayor who leveraged high-performing people and teams in city administration to the betterment of Moscow, to have been seen as a mayor who cleared the way for expedited community development through elimination of unneeded or punitive regulations, and to have been seen as a mayor who stabilized underperforming city functions, characterized their shortcomings, facilitated corrections to mitigate those shortcomings, implemented and measured the effectiveness of needed corrections, and then updated policies and procedures to reflect the improved process.
Thank you. All right, Sage?
Thank you so, so much for being here. Honestly, when I think about elections and the process of us all being up here, you know, I think the first thing that comes to mind when people think about democracy is voting. To me, that's where democracy starts, and it needs to keep on going with continuous participation in government. So I just welcome all of you and thank you all for, for being here and participating in this process. I hope I've demonstrated a passion for public service and demonstrated some, some experience and, and some takeaways from tonight. Honestly, Moscow's a place I, I really love. I can't imagine living anywhere else, and it'd be a huge honor for me to be able to serve you on city council. If you'd like to learn more about me and my background and my qualifications, you're welcome to go to my website, sageforcitycouncil.com. There's also some information, some swag up in the back room. Feel free to take some stuff home with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. John?
Thank you, Ian League, and thank you, MC. Does anybody have a question you want to ask?
We don't have time.
No? Okay. Well, I want to finish my last question that I didn't get finished because I spoke too long. Land use and water. Most of the water in the basin is generated right here on our side of the border. Most of the water is used on the other side of the border. So I think when we're talking about the Palouse Basin Aquifer, we should really be looking at interstate solutions. You know what I'm saying? Not saying that the, the clear water one is a bad idea. In fact, I think it's a pretty good idea. I'd love to talk with Scott more and learn more about the disadvantages of pumping into the aquifer because that is concerning. But we really should be looking at that. In terms of land use, again, we do need to grow, and we also need to conserve our sacred resources. It is a gift where we live, and I do believe that it is possible to grow and sustain the city long into the future while being good stewards of the environment. If you want to learn more about myself and my positions, go to www.johnslagmo.com. Have a nice night, everybody.
Thank you. All right. Steve?
Can I have one on 77? I had too much time. So, that stuff has been brought up a lot. If I've got a profit and loss, profit-loss detail in a balance sheet, I think I could understand it after a couple of months. But 300-plus pages, I would not be able to. A house is made of brick and stone, wood, glass, and metal. A home is made with love, caring, laughter, learning, sharing, empathy. Moscow's my home. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ben?
Moscow has been the perfect place for my family to live and grow, and I'm, I'm excited for an opportunity to give back, whether that's on city council or in some other capacity. I, I just want the opportunity to serve and give back to the community that has given us so much. It is not hyperbole for me to say that it has been the perfect community for my family, and it's been great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
All right. Thank you. Gary?
I've worked hard my whole life. I'm retired now, and I would like to, for the next four years, work very hard for you guys as a Moscow councilman. I was very proud of the farm that I worked on, the dairy farm, and I was very proud of the salmon hatchery that I worked on. And I'd like to be just as proud of the city and working on the city council as I was at those places for the next four years. Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Gina?
I think we all want to do a round of applause and maybe a round of drinks for our timer over here. Okay, that wasn't, yeah, non-stop. I, I have to say that for almost 10 years, I have had the distinct honor to be a city councillor in Moscow. And as I said in the very beginning, it is all about government, and it's government closest to the people. And I have been honored to be able to represent the, the needs and the wants and the, bringing Victoria to the council meetings every other Monday. And I will, will ask eagerly and sincerely for your vote again for another four years of doing the work that I find so incredibly important. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan?
Thanks for coming tonight. I go to my website, www.evanholmesformoscow. I'm going to leave with a little reading. "A call from Moscow's hopeful voice. In Moscow hills, where golden maples sway, a call rings out for civic minds to rise, to shape the town where children grow and play beneath the Palouse's ever-changing skies. I run not for pride or fleeting praise, but for the streets that taught me how and where and when to stand for local shops, the busy campus days, and neighbors lending hearts and helping hands. Let policy be rooted deep in care for housing fair and voices heard where farmer markets thrive in open air, and trust is built with every thoughtful word. So cast your vote, not just for a name or a face, but for a Moscow built to be a better place."
All right. Thank you.
That was for everybody. They all could have read that.
Scott?
All right. This is going to be quick because I have a lot of things. This is my last public forum. I'm going to be heading down to state in about six hours to hopefully watch our state championship soccer team play all weekend. So I need people I got to thank. My wife, you're my person. You're my rock. I love you so much. Thank you. Tara, Cassie, Erin, and Marky, thank you for being the best team that anybody could ask for. You guys made this so much easier on me, and I enjoyed it so much. The community, so humbling to reach out to everybody's supporters and the people who disagree with me. I enjoyed all of it, and it was such a fantastic experience. I think there are two qualities that really define a great leader, and that's passion and determination. And the person that encouraged me and has been in my ear to run exemplifies both of those, and that's Haley Lewis. Your energy, love, and commitment to Moscow is contagious, and it has deepened my passion and strengthened my determination for bettering the future of Moscow. And that is why I'm asking for your vote, because I can't wait to get to work and help build this community. So there's more information from my website at somerformoscow.com, and thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, that concludes this panel. Please tell me thank the panel. Before you do, it takes a lot of courage, I think, to do this, and we appreciate your time, your effort, and your courage. So, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. Let's give them a round of applause. And thank you all for coming tonight. We have another panel coming up, so it'll take us just a minute or two to change over, and then we're